Call meeting in order. Motion to accept the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, unanimous four zero. Why don't we, we're having this, an emergency. Would we consider this an emergency meeting? I know it was scheduled and there was posted, well in advance, but it wasn't scheduled initially, so that we can deal with an update on the storm and do a few practical matters that we need to do to keep our government running efficiently. So Trish, why don't I, the first one we're gonna do is ratify the state of emergency. I guess on Friday evening, when the storm hit, everything kind of went into motion. And what time did you call me, Trish?
Ten fifteen.
So about ten fifteen on Friday night, after the governor had already called a state of emergency for the state, we declared one for the town of Situate as well. And what we need to do is just ratify that amongst the board. So do we need any further discussion than that, or?
No, it's essentially what you said. And you're ratifying, declaring, and I just want to remind everybody that we're still in a state of emergency until you declare we're not. But that's not before us tonight, but just to ratify what we did Friday.
Great. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to memorialize and ratify Acting Chairman Anthony Vignani's declaration of the town of Situate's state of emergency as of ten twenty PM on Friday, February eighth, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous four two zero. What we'd like to do now is, item number three, is to get an update on the storm and related administrative and management items. Trish, you wanna start or pass along?
I'll start and then let the chiefs fill in the bulletin. We've sent out five reverse nine one ones, five storm updates. The latest one was at four o'clock today. As of seven fifteen, we have six hundred people, I'm sorry, I'll check that, nope, six hundred people without power right now. And National Grid tells us they expect to have them all on by midnight.
Wow.
With perhaps the exception of very few numbers. We had, Chief tells me, over two hundred people from National Grid here today getting us up and running. So, and I think, you know, we'll be able to debrief on this over the next several meetings, but having been a really vocal critic, as Representative Cantwell knows, at the DPU hearings previously, I, you know, I want to certainly give praise where praise is due. And National Grid has been nothing short of superlative in their communication with us, in their updates to us, in person with staff here, Pete Duggan and his team, Joe Carroll, I can't say enough good things. A hundred percent of our town was out seventy-two hours ago, a little, and we're all back up today, so I just want to do that.
And just to further expand on what you said, this morning, we all got an email that said that only forty-eight percent of the town was up as of this morning.
Yes, thirty-nine hundred.
So the effort today was, you know, quite a lot to get us up to ninety...
And it wasn't just wires. We're talking setting new poles, putting up wires, and things like that. So I do want to do that. Humorock was down to thirteen homes without. They had a major power failure later today, and six hundred houses were lost. I have not been informed that that is any different as of right now. The challenge we have in Humorock is even though the lines may have been re-energized, if there's salt or water damage, they really, their service connection to their house might be at risk, and so they might need to call an electrician.
So there's twelve hundred now without power, six hundred in Humorock portion of Situate, with NSTAR, and six hundred in the National Grid portion.
Right, right.
And National Grid has pledged, and we totally believe them, because they've been so good about, for the rest of this evening.
Yes, and if that gets any lower, I'm gonna get text during this meeting by the President of National Grid, Marcy Grid.
And we haven't heard anything from NSTAR since.
Not since I talked to them about, what time did I call you guys today? Two, I think, maybe? Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so just so people know, I think what Rick's trying to get across is, Situate baseland, I guess, or whatever, is National Grid, but Humorock is NSTAR. So that's the two different carriers that we have. Sean, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, in light of the circumstances of the storm, I think it would be incumbent upon us to at least say to National Grid, they've done a good job, phenomenal, if that's the way to put it, of responding, unlike the previous storms we've had. And I think it's, you know, the past storms, we've always talked about their negative response, but this one, I think, has been beyond what we expected. Probably it should be the expected response, but it's a response that I think we should at least acknowledge and say thank you. NSTAR, on the other hand, may be another ball of wax. I understand that Humorock has not necessarily gotten a response. I know Marshfield hasn't gotten the response, but at least with National Grid, I think we should at least say thank you, you know? We're quick to respond to the negative things. I think it'd be nice to say thank you for responding. There've been a lot of trucks, a lot of electrical people responding, and I certainly appreciate it. I just got it this afternoon. I know other parts of the town have gotten it sooner, but I have to say, it's refreshing to know that they've been responsive in light of the past two storms that we've had where they were not. So I just think it'd be nice to be able to say thank you, so, I don't know what the board feels, but I think we should send something saying, we appreciate their response despite the past, but we have to say this was an adequate or a very good response in light of the circumstances.
And I'd just like to mention several of the board members, and our Fire Chief and Police Chief did not have power on until Chief Judge got it an hour ago. And Chief Stewart, do you have it yet?
About, it was about noon time today.
So they were without it during this response, coming home.
But that begs the question, that, you know, we as a town need to have some kind of like emergency response center vehicle that we've talked about in the past. We have not done it, and I have to tell you, you know, from a board perspective, we've had more storms recently, and I think as a town, we need to have that type of vehicle, or I think it's like a, I say a...
Well, that's part of the new public safety complex. I think more so than any other storm, especially with the communication challenges we faced Saturday night, when everything, including nine one one, went down for twenty minutes.
I would agree with you, Tricia, except that if the public, you know, safety happens, that's one thing. If it doesn't, we need it nonetheless.
Yep.
So people have to understand that, you know, we need it. So we either put it in the public safety building, or if not, then we need to do it in some kind of like facility for both the police and fire and town administration and the Public Works and the, you know, zoning enforcement, you know, officer, building inspector, in any event. Just my thoughts. People need to understand it, so, there you go.
I want to let the chiefs answer any Q and As before we sort of give to the housekeeping items about schools and stuff, but one of the things that I really want to make sure people understand, and Ruth, if you can put up, is now that people are going back into their homes, there's several safety measures they need to take that we're very, very concerned about now relative to gas, heat, electricity, pipes. We have thirty-seven houses that have had the water shut off right now because of either pipe bursts, or there was water displaying outside. And we're gonna continue to be able to do that. And that's really, you know, getting power back was our first concern, making sure everybody was safe, evacuated. Now, as people return to their homes, we don't want them to, you know, do something without proper information. It's on our website, all the exact instructions. I can go through them later in the meeting, but I just want to stress that and, you know, let you ask the chiefs right now anything you might relative to where we're at.
Great, do we have, I mean, we've all been very hands-on through this whole process, so we're kind of up to speed, but I don't know if anyone has anything specific for the chiefs in terms of questions? No?
I'd just like to say, I've been at the last couple days of the eleven o'clock meetings that Tricia and the chiefs host with all the senior staff and department heads here at Town Hall, and it's very impressive to see the communication. Chief Judge and Tricia sit up here, and everybody else is out here, and you get Neil, and you got everybody. And seeing those verbal communications and everybody talking about what's going on, it's, you guys are doing a great job. I've learned a hell of a lot myself, and it's very impressive to see. Heck of a lot, sorry. Heck of a lot myself, it's very impressive to see, so.
Jim Campbell's here with us, and he's been here throughout the whole process, too. I didn't know if there's anything you wanted to add before. I don't see any specific questions going to the chiefs.
I just wanted to, we had a historic storm that WATD reported. It was the fifth highest amount of snow that we've had in the history, that they've been keeping records of this kind of thing in Situate here. We heard that when the governor came. Rick, you were talking about having winds that were up to the high eighties that were sustained over a period of time, the five-foot storm surge, waves of over thirty feet tall. This has really been a historic time, and it speaks volumes to the leadership here. Trish, I know, it's constantly on the phone with people, not sleeping, Rick, right after both chiefs, working overtime hours. So it really, people who are listening, any of the taxpayers in Situate would be very proud of the leadership that we've had. And I am hopeful, because Marcy Reed was just here yesterday looking for you, Trish, and it was reported that she kept promising, you know, as of tonight, they thought that they would have the high nineties of everybody who'd be restored except for the areas closest to the ocean, that where homes may be uninhabitable. But I want to, by the way, want to put in there, I wanted to thank the Governor Patrick coming yesterday. I'm not sure if you already talked about it before I came in.
No.
But that helped, I can tell you, when we did the press conference in Marshfield, we did the same thing we did here in Situate, we did in Marshfield, and as he was speaking, so a whole bunch of NSTAR trucks rolling in. You know, it makes a difference when the chief executive comes. And we had the National Guard that responded very quickly on Saturday, and we have National Guardsmen here, National Guardsmen in Marshfield. So I've been pleased to see that that kind of spirit of cooperation. But thank you to all the professionals. This is, it's been amazing, the kind of work that you've all pulled together here, and it's not to wit that we haven't had any loss of life during what certainly has had to be up there with ferocity of the greatest storms that we've seen in our region.
Thanks, Jim. Do the two of you, either of you have anything to add? You know, I guess one quick update, I'll say, Chief Judge just told us that the shelter is now closed. The last couple of people that were there have electricity in their home, and they were brought back to their home. I think it probably peaked at, probably close to two hundred people at different times were at the shelter between Friday and, what's the, Tuesday, so somewhere between Friday and Tuesday. I think it opened Friday at about six, didn't it?
Yes.
So you've got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, you know, four days of coverage there. And we'll go through the thanks in a second, but it was so impressive what the people did there, and the amount of hours that people had to put in there. And the people that came there were in such dire need, and they were so thankful for it, for the attention, for the bed, for the warmth, for the food, and for the ability to shower eventually, you know, we got that up and going eventually, and to recharge all their devices and whatnot. I mean, and people from other communities were coming to our shelter, too, because they weren't offered in their community. So, you know, Chief, you had a ton to do to put that together. Your wife was there with a broken foot for it, Jennifer Sullivan, Kim Stewart, the town nurse, you know, just so many people. There's too many people named, because I know I'm gonna forget half of them, but it was just overwhelming, the number of volunteers that were there, and literally, probably around the clock for four straight days, some people were there, including yourself. I think you may have bunked there a little, Booth. So thank you guys for that. What else in terms of just, is there any streets that are not passable now?
Streets are all passable, but there's certainly very hazardous conditions on the Upper Underglades Road, Oceanside Drive, Lighthouse in Rebecca, and Central Avenue. So, you know, we'd ask, we're gonna restrict those for the time being to residents only, and let the DPW continue to do the work down there and get those widened out and opened up. And, you know, we've got additional offices working now, we'll have them overnight and during the day tomorrow. Encourage citizens only, only call nine one one for emergencies. And the other thing, too, is if, you know, now, if you see an electrical wire down, chances are it's energized, so treat it as such, and call nine one one, let us know about it.
So again, try not to travel on the oceanfront streets where there's still a lot of damage. Wires are live, so be careful and do not touch them, and...
Nine one one?
Nine one one, right, only for emergencies, call nine one one.
I actually have a question. There's a, driving around areas of town that I know are live, and there are wires down, and they look to me to be very skinny wires, and they're low, coming low on the phone poles. So I assume those are telephone, cable, and stuff like that, right?
Cable and Verizon are the...
They're the lowest ones, right? Yeah, sure, okay.
You can't, I shouldn't say that's only a cable...
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that.
It's wrapped around a primary, and it's...
Absolutely.
...being charged just as...
Absolutely, and that's my point. My point is, is don't touch those either, but I haven't seen any of the cable trucks around or anything. I assume that's gonna be a second wave.
There's a few. I saw one, or actually several down along Oceanside.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Sean?
Did the chief have one thing I have to...
Yeah, I'd say something, you know, you've given us, Brian and I, all these kudos, which we really appreciate, but I'm sure Brian feels the same way.
Absolutely.
You know, our guys are out there for, you know, hours and hours. They're the guys that did all the work, basically. And those are the guys that really deserve the kudos.
I'll tell you right now, I mean, Friday night into Saturday, the fire department came on Sand Hills. There was a transformer that had blown, and fire department came, and then there was the police department that came and sat, nursed it until actually was shut down. So you both get kudos. Everybody in the neighborhood was freaked out, out of fear that, you know, these, you know, I don't want to say ashes, but in other words, the sparks were actually going, and they were flying through the air, and everybody was fearful that it was gonna hit their house, create a fire, and then if it went from one house to the other. Everybody was worried about it, but I mean, it was nice to see the fire department initially, police department, and, you know, it was under control. So both, it was a partnership, and I have to say, I mean, I sat there, I watched it, I watched it till two thirty in the morning, because I felt freaked out about it. But I'm like, it was nice to see, you know, you guys really, your people worked really hard, you know, during that time period and thereafter, so kudos do go for them, you know?
Sean?
Yeah, I'd stop by thanking you, Tony. You were coming in at, I don't know if it was Friday night or Saturday morning, you had spoken to me, I couldn't be around because of what I do, but you came in with Tricia. You spent, I don't know how many hours here, you know, doing whatever you could do, answering phones, whatever. So I wanted to stop by thanking you. I thought it might be nice, and back me up here to where we send these letters, to these companies from Alabama, Colorado, Billerica, is I have been driving around a lot lately. They have been nothing but courteous, professional. They don't always have details, so when you're trying to drive by them, I know it's difficult for them to be watching out, but I'd really like to see those guys get recognized, you know? If we could write letters directly to the D and D Power and all these different companies that were contractors of National Grid, you know, if we could get a list at some point, and see, you know, I just think that's, the big thing is their attitude. When I would go by, though, I wish I had coffees to give them, but, you know, you felt like it, you know? You know, when we first spoke at our emergency meeting, it was gonna be seventy-two hours in driving around. I haven't seen this since the Blizzard of seventy-eight, and, you know, the destruction of the mountains down.
Excuse me, thank you.
I thought that was aggressive, and then we're pleasantly surprised by others, by some neighborhoods getting turned on even sooner. So I just think that's a credit, like Brian and Ricky just said, you know, not only to them, but everyone down the line that did the actual work, put the time in. And that doesn't go for just the police and fire, the sewer department, the water department, the DPW, you know? And I think, Tricia, if somehow we could publicly recognize those people that don't get the recognition, who has to stay at the sewer department or water department to make sure the pumps stay going behind the scenes.
Sean, you hit one thing, which I, we talked about briefly two days ago during the emergency session, which was, you know, the roads were impeccable. I mean, I had gone through seven towns to find gasoline, and I'll tell you right now, out of all the towns, and I'm not saying it because of the town of Situate, it was, the roads were cleaned, at least the main roads, to be able to get around, and it was impeccable, as opposed to other towns. And I could enamor right now, but I'm saying, it was, they did a great job. They took pride in just plowing and making sure.
They did a good job with what the equipment, I've been aware of what's been going on my whole adult life. What's happened is, you've, we haven't had a big event like this in a long time, since really the Blizzard, or maybe one or two others, but what you've, in the last thirty years, you see more and more pickup trucks that are used to plow these municipalities, and they can get away with it until you have a two-foot storm like this, especially when it's wet, and those start breaking down. That's when you need the larger trucks. So that's, you know, it's definitely a challenge for all the towns. But if I could just say one more thing, and this isn't for a discussion tonight, but Trish and I just spoke about it a little bit. Kim might remember me saying this a while ago, we're gonna have to get more aggressive with a tree trimming project, you know? I mean, you know, you're just going to Rockland and so forth, and they never lost power, and I think a lot of it is because of the trees. I mean, it looks great to have all the streets lined with trees, but the reality is that, you know, this is what happens when we have high winds. So if it, you know, we have a bucket truck, you know, for the DPW, if we look at the tree and park department at some point, and if we add an employee, and I don't know where, I should know, if, what type of license they should have to operate the bucket truck and so forth to go out and trim trees, but maybe have a little more of a, you know, organized program to go down certain roads, and have it, you know, twelve months a year, if weather permitting, so.
And National Grid really has to be involved in that, too, because they have, they have done some, but...
Well, what they do, Tony, is they look, they do what, they look out for themselves, right? And so they should, you know, but, you know, maybe, and I'm not a tree guy, but, you know, if they trim certain branches, then it makes it lopsided, or to have an employee that works for the town be able to identify a tree that's dead, I couldn't tell you if one's dead or not, and, you know, think, ones, the high-risk ones.
Two issues, Sean, you raise, and Tony, you do, too. The first issue is, should be like, okay, when you're dealing with National Grid or NSTAR, you know, going forward, we should think about a long-term plan about, is there a possibility of putting some of the wires underground? There's some areas you can't do it because of the water and the salts and everything else, but maybe we can think about it. Now, that's in conjunction with them putting money there, the town, maybe the state, the federal, there may be a possibility, or maybe not, but at least that would prevent some of the wires being knocked by trees going forward. Same, Representative Canwell, Marshfield, I think that's a possibility. The second is, you're right, Sean, in other words, we begin to think about our trees and think of our streets and the wires, and say, okay, we may have large trees that may canopy, shall we say, over the wires, maybe that shouldn't be the case, maybe we should think about having arborists coming in and saying, okay, we're gonna have trees that create shade for the streets and the homes, but not necessarily canaping over the wires, and you have smaller trees, but they give the same relief that you'd expect long-term, and that's an issue long-term. You know, I think that's a valid point you raise.
Thanks. Just one more, you know, there's too many names to thank, but I will tell you this, firsthand, the three people in this room, I rode around with them in the car, I saw it, the amount of work that this town puts into dealing with something like this is just unbelievable. Tricia, you did a great job managing the whole process. You were up, I mean, none of you guys have had much sleep in the last four days, I can tell just by looking at you guys, and so, but the amount of work is absolutely non-stop...
There's a compliment somewhere in there.
Rick?
Brian, you look like...
Just in the cruiser with the chief, non-stop, evacuating on this one, evacuation on this road, evacuation, it was non-stop work, and your departments just responded immediately, and a lot of praise. We're very, very lucky to be in a community where all the staff, you know, reacted the way they did and worked as hard as you did, particularly under the leadership of you three. Obviously, all the police officers and the firefighters, we saw in and out of the shelter all the time. It goes much deeper than that, so, you know, I want to thank all of you. I did nothing, I just kind of stood in the background and shook hands. WATD, I wanted to thank them, they did a great job. They were our only means of communication to get out to people, because nobody had cable or anything. Al Bangert and his group did a great job as well, you know, Bill was in here, so it just goes on and on and on. So if somehow we can get a comprehensive list of everyone to thank, that would be great, because just a lot of work, and a lot of people went above and beyond what their normal work is to get, to get us through this really catastrophe. So we could go on forever here. Rick, if you want to add something?
Yeah, just briefly, all these kudos are certainly well-earned and certainly deserved, but just to bring back to one of Tricia's earlier points this evening, we are still under a state of emergency, and there are still a lot of people without power. And so we've come a long way, and we've still got a good chunk of the way to go.
Just one thing I want to say is, Tony, you're absolutely right. Chief, chief, Tricia, phenomenal job. Tony, great job, too, phenomenal. And the same vein, I have to say, with all the employees, they've done a great job, and it's not forgotten. You know, everybody did a great job. You know, these are the times where you have to ask people in your town to come together. This is the, these are the circumstances that, you know, emergency happens, and they did a great job. Everybody did, and it's not forgotten. So I can tell you, from the Board of Slackmen, I think I speak for everybody on this board, you know, we don't forget that. These are the times that, you know, people go beyond what is expected, and we'll remember that, we will. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Great, want to move to item number three? So item number, go ahead.
Yeah, I got a couple more things just for tomorrow. Schools are closed tomorrow. We made a decision this morning that the sidewalks, like Sean was saying, how with regular snow, you can use a pickup and a plow, we can't use the Bombadillas and the Bombcats for the sidewalks. We need loaders and stuff. So transfer station is open tomorrow at nine. Take anything in a blue bag. So we expect food spoils and things. Other than that, it's gonna go over the scale, and people will pay accordingly.
Just, recycle will be open also?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Just to say, thank you for DPW, because you know what, it's a day off, they don't have to.
That's true, yeah.
They've been through a ton of stuff, and having it open on Wednesday, which is their weekend, you know what, that's a really nice thing to have, so I want to thank you and everybody else.
And again, we've brought in extra compacters, Kevin Cafferty, to make, because we assume, and that's why the transfer station wasn't open, because it wasn't energized to have the compactors move. I mean, when people wait for their electricity, we have to bring up the wastewater treatment plant, the water system plants, those are all priorities, the police department, those have to come up, and that's how we prioritize the National Grid, but those are also huge electricity users, and if there was major different, tree destruction, I think you all saw out here in three A, that fed all us here, that's how we prioritized it, which makes residential customers wait a little longer, but we have water pressure, it was bad yesterday, it's back today, the sewer tree, we could have had much, much worse problems if any of those systems were compromised, and those are the things you don't think of, like the wells and stuff like that, so.
Just on the transfer station, is it gonna be closed on Thursday or open on Thursday?
No, I think it's gonna be open.
So open on Thursday?
Yeah.
And the pumping station in Mann Hill is functioning now, right?
Yes, we were able to take care of that.
There are some people who had brown water, it's now cleared up, but at least people should understand that, right?
Yeah, so, so that's that. The public library is open, so let me, town offices are open for staff tomorrow, closed to the public. The library is open. We figure parents with children need an outlet. The recreation department will have limited activities at the high school gym, accompanied by a parent, basketball, things like that, so we can give folks a little bit of relief. But tomorrow's main, main push is going to be to get the streets. We don't want to have, you know, some tragedy after we've come this far, so we want to make sure. And as, you know, we were talking this morning in emergency management, we've gone from a hundred percent power to having schools open by Thursday. Boston, Natick, Medford, Somerville, they are all closed today, too, and they just had snow. So I think, you know, considering we've had the power out and we're in a position to be up and open again. I will warn parents that the superintendent did tell me that since it's two days, going to be two days before February vacation, all of those kids are gonna go home with lots of homework, unfortunately, to make up for the loss of time, but I'll let him deal with that.
A quick note on the school, you know, they had to make this decision today at about one. At that point, we still only knew that we had forty-eight percent of the people with power, there were still issues on the roads, so, you know, and people still have, you know, most, a lot of people from Situate had to leave because they didn't have heat, so they had to get communication to get back so they could do the stuff. So that was part of the decision-making and... So that was part of the decision-making in the school thing.
And they've done a wonderful job, that's the truth. I mean, given the circumstances of this huge storm, you know, Tony, you're absolutely right. I mean, so they take another day, so be it. It may push them off into June, that's fine, nothing wrong with that. It really isn't, I mean, I mean, they got a vacation next week, I mean, truth be told, I mean, what are you going to do? My neighborhood just got electrified at 2:00. If we didn't have electricity tonight, why the heck would I send my kids tomorrow to school? It doesn't make any sense.
I'm just going to remind you.
And the bosses can't get that. So I'm just sitting here going, you know what, John and the whole school, they, they made the right decision. Period.
So now that people's power is up, it will naturally segue to when is my road debris and everything going to be cleared? That is going to take a long time, and as I've explained to a few people in emails today, that is going to be prioritized by emergency management officials on a needed basis, and again, they're going to have to be patient in a different vein, but it is going to take a while. We thought we were going to have some inclement weather this weekend, the DPW has to have, is in Hammerock trying to move that sand back onto the beach, because it's been eroded so much that if we get more inclement weather, it's, it's just going to be worse. We understand people are frustrated and might not like the way in which their property is restored, there's lots of trees and limbs, but we have to segment, segment the work now going forward to do that. Town Hall has no internet, Town Hall has no cable right now, so we have no emails. So folks who are emailing us and sending it to other people and think they're getting a response, they're not, we simply don't have it, and we have to get, tomorrow, one of the reasons we're also closed is we have lots of business functions we have to do, because we've been shut down for four days. And so again, I know we're going to get calls about road and debris and sand, and it's just, it's going to be a while, because the December 2010 storm, the Norisa, Sandy, all in the coastal areas, this was the entire town, trees down all over town, so it's going to take a lot longer, and I just want people to understand that. And I think that's it in terms of the immediate stuff on the storm update.
Great. So move on to item number three, which is a...
Motion?
Just to, yeah, just to, obviously, one of the outcomes of the storm is the expenses that are needed, or that are incurred to help repair, provide safety, and do the cleanup. So that, obviously, none of that was in our budget. So what we're going to do right now is vote to deficit spend, which means spend above and beyond your budget, in a dollar amount, so that we can pay for all this activity that we've had to do. Tricia's gone through and estimated, we're estimating a number of $750,000. If it's less than that, then obviously the money will go back, we're essentially borrowing it from our stabilization fund. I talked to Representative Cantwell, and we feel that there may be some federal funding that may be able to come, because you have to hit a certain threshold in your, in your county, and it looks like we're going to hit that threshold. So, of course, that doesn't come immediately, that'll come...
Long time.
Year, two, or three years later. Motion?
Love it.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the incurrence of $750,000 liability in excess of appropriations as permitted by Mash General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, in recognition of the continuing emergency, and with the approval of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 4-2-0. Item number four is other matters. Anybody have anything else to discuss?
Again, I just go back to National Grid doing a great job electrifying the town, given the time requirements, the, the town officials, both the DPW, police, fire, I know, for example, after we had an emergency meeting two days ago, I went out to Lighthouse Point, where it was literally covered with sand and cobblestone, and I saw Robert Patterson just with a front-end loader trying to clear it. You know, these are the type of people, and he's an example of many people in town, who've gone out of their way to clear, you know, to help everybody in their neighborhood to clear the town and help them out, and I just think it's phenomenal to recognize everybody in town, whether it's the zoning board, or Neil, Neil and Nicole, or, like I say, Chief Judge, Chief Stewart, the whole, the police department, phenomenal job, in particular, Tricia Van Kezey, and you, Tony, you did a great job. So I just, no, but I mean, the reality is, people don't understand, let me tell you this, you know, as chairman or the person who's in the chair, they're the person who's taking the responsibility for the rest of us. And, you know, Tony and Tricia and Sheila and Kim, who just left, you know, they're the ones who actually field all these calls. You've got 19,000 people in this town who are calling, complaining, everything else under the sun. Didn't happen this time, I know when I was chairman, you know, somebody was complaining in the midst of the day-after-Christmas storm, why isn't the transfer station open? Day after, why isn't it open? We had all this mess going on with a breach of a wall and everything else, and I just have to say, you know, everybody's done a great job, and this is the time to say thank you. And there are so many people, I mean, we can go down the list, you know, whether it's D and D, Sean, as you mentioned, Electric from New York, you know, National Grid brought in a ton of people, there are subsidiaries who brought them in, but I'm like, thank you all, and thank you for the people who opened up, you know, the Millworf and all these other places that had generators, Ed Scarsoloni with gasoline...
Donated food.
You know, people who donated food, the whole nine yards, so it's a group effort, and just thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, to end on a positive note, we just got a text from Mark Reed of N-Star, that Hammerock, all but seven people have powered at Hammerock.
Oh, great.
I think they wanted to make sure they did that before your meeting.
Good.
Right.
Because I'm sure they're all flicking on their TVs right now.
Um, Tony, a couple things, we received a phone call from Senator Cowan's office today, offering any assistance they can, our new senator. Congressman Lynch called yesterday, offering any support that he could. Obviously, at our meeting with the governor, Representative Bradley was there yesterday as well, but I certainly would be remiss if I didn't thank Representative Cantwell, who is always there, and is always the first to call, and always the one to do whatever he can to help, and lets me vent when we need intermediaries with the utility company, which I did yesterday with N-Star.
They're afraid.
But, um...
They're all out, Jim.
But I, I mean, you know, out of the gate, people think governments are bureaucracy, and we're part of that as being local government, but it's also our job to make utility companies and other state agencies responsive to us when we're in need, and particularly when we have a situation like this. And I think Jim understands and appreciates that, and is always there to do whatever he can to cut through the red tape, and he's, he's like an employee, he's like a staff member with us. And I just, I have to thank Brian and Rick, I think we've gotten a lot closer with this storm than the previous ones, and we're all kind of hunchedy right now, but I think the world of them, and, you know, we're just here to serve you.
You've done a great job, and Jim, you truly care about our community, and that's why, that's why you win the election every year, and that's why, you know, we're glad to have you. I do want to take one...
Just one thing, Jim, you have, and I have to tell you, the prior representative, I, you know, you've done an excellent job, excellent, excellent, bottom line is, you know, you, no, I know, this is not a kumbaya session, but I'm just saying, people need to understand that, you know what, Jim, you were here during the midst of everything, and I can't say any other representative have, you were. So you know what, people in Situate should understand that, you know, you've, you have been here during, you know, the midst of the storm, other people have not, and you have, so I, people should recognize that. Ruth, you should recognize that in your newspaper, you know, Jim does.
Oh, no.
You should, period.
One quick thing that someone mentioned, the governor, I want to thank the governor for coming here, although a lot of, a lot of his visit was to come and give support to the community. We did have an opportunity to sit down with him and talk about some very key issues. We won't go into them now, but Rick brought up a great issue about seawalls, and we're pounding him about, you know, our need for that, and talking about evacuation things, so it really did give us an opportunity to talk to him, and hopefully that will go. On a lighter note, I'll give a little plug for a fundraiser that got canceled on Saturday because of the storm. Andreas Auction has been rescheduled to this Friday night, so another great cause, if you thought it was canceled and wasn't going to happen again, it is back on for Friday evening. Anybody else have any other business? No. Great.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn the meeting at 7:57 PM, and for the signing of documents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Good night, everyone. Good night, John.
Guys, Kim has one.